I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:03 PM. And we'll start with public comment. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment?
Yes, if I may. First selectmen members, my name is Frank Stanek, 22 North Benham Road here in Seymour. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the Board of Selectmen for opening Town Hall on Fridays, at least a half a day. I think it's better than nothing. I would like to see Town Hall open the entire day, but I think it's a step forward. I think it was not a good decision many, many years ago, prior to this sitting Board of Selectmen, to go to a four-day work week. I know it was done for various reasons, but I would like to thank you. And I do hope that if we find that the use of Town Hall on Fridays is not as it's not as extensive as the other four days, that at some point the Board of Selectmen does not go forward and say, "Okay, we're going to close Town Hall because it's only 50% being used by or 50% of the people who use the Town Hall the other days are only using it on Friday." I think we need to maybe again publicize that Town Hall is open on Friday, and I hope that we keep it open. And it's a convenience, not only for people, but a necessity for a lot of professionals who work for the people of the town of Seymour, such as attorneys, title searchers, contractors, surveyors, and the like, appraisers, and the like. And again, thank you.
Mr. Stanek.
Al Yagavane, 25 Elaine Drive, Seymour, Connecticut. First of all, I'd like to respond to Frank, yeah, Freddie Stanek's comment. I agree with him that Fridays, it should be open full day. And the reason for that, whether we like it or not, you people are here to serve the community. The full-time staff is here to serve the community, not themselves or any particular groups, but all people. And I find that many of us forget that for which we are here. Now, with that, I'd like to respond to some questions about tax-exempt veterans. I think it's great that you're looking at that. I'm hoping you would increase the tax exemption because I'll tell you, just today alone, up at Bobby Fritz's in Oxford, I met two veterans that are on disability. They came down with Parkinson's disease. They have problems with their lungs from Agent Orange, and they need help. What they're getting is, one gentleman said he finally, after twenty-some-odd years, seventy-four, oh, it's more than that, thirty-some-odd years since the Vietnam War, his lungs are so bad, and he had to wait to finally get the VA to give him approval for something like 40% disability. Now, 40% is nothing. His medical bills are atrocious. Parkinson's disease, heart problems, lung problems, and I could mention more on taxes. That was just one. The other gentleman had Parkinson's disease and problems with his lungs, also from Agent Orange. Remember this. We are here to conduct business, to protect our families. Less than 1% serve in the military. And in combat, and I don't expect everybody to be in the service because some people are not qualified to be there, okay? So I'm not saying that everybody. But for those that served in combat, been shot at, been gassed, you name it, they deserve all the help and respect, not just for today, not just a pat on the back, but forever. It's a hard job. I know. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Name an address for the record, please.
My name is James Williams. I live at 26 Evening Star Drive in Seymour. My comment is about, I'm a member of PFW, Post 12084, and also Post Tanner of the American Legion here in Seymour. I spent four years in the Army, a year in '66 and '67 in Vietnam as a helicopter crew chief. And what I want to know from the committee here is, what do we have to do as veterans, our post 12084? We're at Day Street, and we're looking for a home. We need your help to put us in someplace of our own. Our stuff is in a Conex, at Daddy O's. We're paying $125 a month, which we really don't have to keep it there. We're really looking for a place of our own. Any help we can get, we certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Is there any other public comment? Ask one last time, any other public comment? Hearing no public comment, we'll close. Public comment? Going to ask to take a motion to go out of order and move down to item number 10 on the agenda. Do you have a motion to do so?
So moved.
Motion by Nicole, second by Al. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Next item on the agenda, item number 10, excuse me, action in lieu of special town meeting regarding Department of Public Works Ram 550 Mason-style dump truck with material, spreader, and plow. The Chairman of the Board of Public Works is going to come up and just give us a quick overview of the truck and the scenario that took place, and then the selectmen will take action at that point. So Sean, if you could, just for the record.
Sean Walsh, 126 Pearl Street. What do you specifically?
Tell a little about the truck.
It's a Dodge 5500, which is a mid-weight capacity dump truck, pretty much standard. It's kind of like our general wheelbarrow. It's the thing that everybody uses every day, our main-stained vehicle. This has been funded for an off-the-line item. It's not in capital. It's a revolving process. This is, we've discussed in the past, they put together a program where we were going to get the trucks rolling, where they'd have basically a planned obsolescence, where we would get rid of them at the end of their lifespan while they were still at their warranty point. And we're not going to spend as much on the elaborate 20-year truck anymore. We're going to buy a truck that's a little more conservative as far as its build. This would be the first in that line of trucks. The truck is about $17,000, $18,000 cheaper than the previous trucks because we didn't go with the stainless appointments. We didn't go with the higher-end hydraulic systems and stuff. So this is the first one of that rolling system to get rid of the trucks before they become a problem. So the truck came to a little over $75,000 with all the amenities. It's with a, it'll be warranty the whole time it's here. So we'll save money on our maintenance end because realistically, anything goes wrong with it, it's just going to get back to the dealer. So the price came in, this is from a dealer. It's off, basically it's lower than the state-priced pricing. So it really defeats the point to go out to bid when this is a locked-in price of the state. What's the definition there for the state?
State bid list?
Yeah, state bid list. There's a preferred pricing. And this truck is done. This is sitting on a lot. The other problem with custom building, we won't have a truck this winter. This truck is sitting in Watertown. It's already built. We brought it down. The guys inspected it. They're happy. It meets pretty much everything we would have asked for. I think the only thing it has that we wouldn't ask for was it has a better radio than I would have put it in spec, but that's really not a, that's a marginal discrepancy. If there's any specific questions anybody has, I can answer.
All right, any questions from the board members on the truck itself? And again, we put aside $90,000 a year in the Public Works budget to purchase new 550s. And the goal was we'd roll these trucks over, as Sean mentioned, every six years. These are, as he put it, the workhorses of their fleet. So we want to keep these up to five years, excuse me. So again, the issue normally, at this price, it would go out to bid. If we went out to bid, we'd be looking at two or three months for that process, and then probably another five or six months to have the truck built. We would purchase off the state bid list anyway. We're in a position now where we're getting a truck that is a little bit below the state bid list price, that is ready to go. That if this board approves this tonight, we'll cut a PO tomorrow, and we'll have the truck within a few days, which is good. So we'll have this truck on hand, ready to go for the time the snow starts to fall. Ready to go. So that's kind of where we are on this. So Rich, anything you want to?
Two things. If you could note for the record, so that it's in the minutes, that the lack of a quorum for the town meeting was not due to inclement weather, which is a requirement under the charter, and two, there's a specific bid waiver exemption for purchases authorized under the town meeting provision. So you're acting in lieu of the town meeting due to the lack of a quorum. So you have the authority to waive the bid and proceed in this fashion.
Questions or comments, anything for Sean? We moved them up because Sean is someplace else to base them. Wanted to get him in and get him out, so. Okay, then at this point, I'll entertain a motion that the Board of Selectmen act in lieu of special town meeting regarding the purchase of a Ram 550 Mason-style dump truck with material, spreader, and plow for the Public Works Department, and that the Board of Selectmen is doing so because there was no issue with weather. Is that correct? Is that all right?
Just note for the record that you, that the lack of a quorum.
A lack of a quorum was not due. Was not due to inclement. Okay. So could I add that motion?
So moved.
Motion by Karen, second by Nicole. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. So you can get the PO tomorrow. Excellent. Thank you, Sean.
I just wanted to note for the record, this should be easier when I can do this from my seat. This is a hassle.
The viewing public appreciates your 32 steps. Yes, thanks, Sean. Okay, item number four, approved minutes from the August 2, 2016 regular meeting. Do you have a motion to do so?
So moved.
Motion by Nicole, second by Anne Marie. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Item number five, First Selectmen's report. I just want to give a quick update on the road program because I know we've talked about it a lot over the last couple of meetings. Just want to go through the bond issue because we've had some conversations about what roads would be in 2017, 2018. I asked all of you to respond back to me directly. I did hear from all of you. Just want to read through the roads again, so that way everybody is aware if anybody has any questions. I think you've all seen the updated document, but, so for 2017, the plan is to do Renee Road, Kulas Terrace, Bellevue Terrace, Emma Street, Botchford Road, which would be from Great Hill to Mountain and Davis, and then Botchford Road, which would be from Mountain to Brookfield, Bunge Road, from Botchford to West Church, Nickel Street, French Street, Spruce Street, Robert Street, North Main Street, Mountain Road, from Botchford to Deerfield, Mountain Road, from Glen Circle to Canfield, Mountain Road, from Canfield to Titus, Mountain Road, Brook Street to Route 67, West Church Street, Bunting Road, from Skokarat to Edwards, Cherry Street, Colony Road, from Chayden to the Town Line, and then Lorain Ave. So those are what we have scheduled for 2017. That should agree with all the conversations that we've had. 2018, 2019, then we'll fill in as well. With the proactive money and the money that we have left for this year, Brian has rerun some numbers. We're going to do a crack sealing. We're going to do about $50,000 worth of crack sealing on the following roads, Skokarat Street, Pearl Street, Osprey, Buckingham, Eleanor, Chatfield, Silvermine, West Street, Cathy Drive, Peach, Stanley, Meadow Woods, High Ridge, Mountain, Southwest, and Bunting. And if I can just point out, one of the roads that's on there is West Street, and that road was done, I believe it was two years ago. It's already starting to crack. So by having this proactive crack sealing program, instead of just ignoring this road, letting it go until it's falling apart, we're going to crack seal it, so this will help this road last even longer. The, we're going to do some spot repairs, which Brian is calling partial full-depth repair. It's going to be a mill and a two-inch overlay. So these are roads that have some issues, but roads that we're not going to address right away. As an example, Old Ansonia Road, we all know that that road is pretty bad. We're not going to be able to get to that for two years. So we're projected doing some spots on that road, some spots on Pearl Street, some spots on Skokarat, Silvermine, Laurel Lane, and then DeForest, First, Columbus, and Wakely in their entirety. That's going to be about $256,000 worth of work. So I just wanted to give everybody an update as to where all the projects stood. If anybody wants more information, just let me know, and I can provide, Karen, go ahead.
Didn't we talk two weeks ago about waiting until Mr. McGanney's building is done to repair that road?
Yeah, we're just going to program the funding.
Oh, okay.
When he, my understanding, and Anne Marie can probably speak a little bit better, is he's going to have to go down about 25 feet, dig into the road to make the connection he's going to have to make. He's going to be required to do a curb-to-curb patch on that. So he's going to do about half the road. So we'll come in, he'll do half, we'll do the other half, and we'll be able to have the road completely redone.
Is that because of a sewer?
Yes. Yeah, sewer, sure. So that, I just wanted to focus my report on that tonight, just to give everybody an update, so. All right, so that closes the First Selectmen's report. We're now going to move on to the Don Smith portion of our program. So, item number six, discussion, take possible action regarding Connecticut State Library Grant for Library Construction. Now, before Don starts, as we know, as part of the bond package that hopefully we'll be putting on the ballot in November, we'll be looking for about $1.5 million in work to be done in the four town buildings, that being the library, the police department, Town Hall, and the community center. Through the efforts of our librarian, she has uncovered a potential matching grant that the town could do, which Don has been working on to allow us to pick up an extra roughly $100,000 in work. So with that, I'll turn it over to Don.
Thank you, Kurt. As you recall, about a month ago, we were here and discussing a notice of intent or an application of intent for a state library grant, which this board had approved and sent forward. And now comes the actual application itself, and it needs to be up in Hartford by September 1st, looking at what is eligible for funding on that list and what is reasonable for funding on that list. There are basically two things, one being energy conservation, and number two, code improvements. The lower-level windows at that library are original to the building from 1958. So they have seen better days. They're all single-pane windows. And that is our, basically our energy conservation measure to replace those windows with double-pane windows. So that will be a energy conservation measure. The thing that gets a little bit concerning with that is due to the age of the building. We'd be concerned a little bit about PCVs being contained in the blocking that we use for those windows. So we have some contingency money. We've included some money for PCV abatement, which we include some contingency money, but that is something that will be required because of the age of the building that we need to look into. The other, in terms of energy efficiency, energy conservation, lighting fixture replacement. Most of the fixtures in that building had been replaced in 1993 and subsequently. But there was a recent study that the library commissioned, and there are about $25,000 to $26,000 in lighting fixture replacements or improvements that could be done. It has about an eight-year payback on that $25,000. So if we were doing it by ourselves, we might not be doing that, but at half of the price, I think that that's, you know, the payback is now four years or so. And then in terms of code improvements, our lovely fire marshal, Mr. Wedowitz, always looking to make things better and safer for everyone. But for those of you who recall, the original main entrance of the library with the stairs that go down to the side parking lot, all of the wire glass in that stairwell is not proper. It doesn't have the required fire code for stairwell as opposed to the adjoining space. So Paul has asked us to include as part of the code requirement work replacing that wire glass with fixed walls. Part of the energy conservation would be the old front door and the window above that. That would be replaced because, again, that's original construction, single-pane, and then new doors between that stairwell and the library. That stairwell also has some asbestos floor tile in it, so while we're in there, we're going to get rid of that as well. So between all of those items, we come up with a subtotal of approximately $183,000. Adding in architects, engineering, and environmental professional services, we'll have about $22,000. $20,000 in contingency funds. Estimated project total is $225,000, which we would be eligible for 50% of that if there is sufficient money to go around with this thing. The grant is based on actual funds expended, so although we're estimating this now at 225, if it comes in at 180 or 200 and we don't get into the contingency, that's what the grant would be, is half of the actual construction cost. I think you had the application as part of your package, so there was a number of attachments to it. So the application is complete, and at this point, we've, the matching funding. There is a letter that Kurt needs to sign that goes along with the application, committing the town to the matching funds of $112,000. As Kurt indicated, we would hope that this is going to be part of our bond referendum from November and through the passage of that bond referendum, and then we'll set. In the event that that bond does not pass, we would need to program $112,000 in next year's budget for a match. That's really the only catch and kicker. If the referendum does not go through, basically by submitting the application, we're committing a match, whether it's referendum or general fund under the budget. We would have one year after bond commission approves the funds. General Bond Commission acts on library grants in the spring, some of those generally in February, March. Some we would have until March of 2018. Recommendation is to authorize Kurt to sign the application for $112,500 for state everything.
Okay, and just with regards to the money, if for some reason the bond, the resolution question doesn't get on to the ballot, or it fails, the town has put aside $150,000 a year in proactive building funds. We already have this money programmed into the budget. So if for some reason it didn't happen, it wouldn't be an issue to cover this. Any other questions for Don?
Yeah. The 200, you talked between the budget between $183,000 and $125,000. Does that leave the work going out in the bids, if that's way kind of lower?
Yes. Any other comments, thoughts, questions? And Rich, correct me if I state this wrong. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to allow the First Selectmen to sign Page 10 of 11 of the 2016 Application for State Public Library Construction Grant, section Governing Body Certification of Application. As presented by Town Engineer Don Smith. Motion by Nicole, second by Karen. Is there any discussion? There we go, sorry. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Thank you, Don. Okay, item number seven, discussion, take possible action regarding potential senior daycare facility. As you know, I've, I updated you all over the last couple of meetings that we had been working with TEAM with regards to potentially putting an adult daycare center in the top level of the Seymour Community Center. Don has been working hand-in-hand with the staff at TEAM to try to get this accomplished. And what we'd like to do is have an update given to the board to talk about some different scenarios. And then, again, if everyone is still comfortable, we'll have Don continue moving forward this process. Do you want to stand up and join us, too? So we also have Suzanne Riley from TEAM, who's here as well, just to help Don out if he gets.
Also a Seymour resident and a official acting agent.
Yep.
The floor plan that I just passed out is actually the second floor of the community center. And the area, let Sue explain about the senior daycare, that's more information. But the area, basically to the, to your right, the four orange classrooms, that would be the addition to the original middle school. Those areas would be shared areas. We're looking to improve the entire second floor. We're going to do a lot of work in the entire building, but these areas here, the orange areas, would be the shared areas between the town of Seymour and the club, the Boys and Girls Club. But the senior daycare would be the old building or the original section of the entire second floor. It's approximately 7,000 square feet. Proposal is to establish a reception area, starting from the left to right, a reception area, director's office, and a small business office in purple. The large room in blue would be a proposed activity room. There are certain requirements for amount of square face, square footage for each client that be provided within the space. And then to the right of that activity room is a nurse's office with a medicine area and attached bathroom, as well as two more client bathrooms. Across the hall on the backside of the building, we would have a dining area that serves 40 people. There would be a small kitchen area that would be just a warming kitchen only. They would be bringing food in from the outside to serve. And then there'd be two bathrooms with showers. The proposed adult day center is a, what they call a medical model. So as with that, we would need to provide some ability for hygiene, personal hygiene, so we're providing showers to go along with that. And then the next room over would be a break room, a small washing room, washing dryer room, and a small step back. So this is really the improvements to the second floor. Other things that we'd like to do, when we build, and again, go with that second floor. The renovations, as you're probably aware, most of you were, that second floor has not, pretty much the same as it was when it was vacated 16 or 17 years ago. Floor tiles are still there, light fixtures, wall finishes. There's been some demolition work done up on the upstairs, but not a lot. But what, you know, is being considered and what we're trying to include into the project is obviously the renovations of the top floor, which would include asbestos abatement of the floor tiles, new flooring, tiny crystal tile ceilings, new lighting, painting, new bathrooms with new fixtures and equipment, and window replacement. And again, there's this ugly word called PCV contamination. Due to the age of the building, it's something that we cannot. But the top-level windows, this proposal is to be to replace all the windows on the top floor. And that would service town of Seymour, the adult day facility, town of Seymour Recreation Department. And those four shared program rooms could be used by the Recreation Department, Boys and Girls Club, which will be in town for meetings. The lower level, propose to do some improvements to the lower level. Right now, which is occupied by the Boys and Girls Club, again, some more asbestos abatement. Asbestos there, the asbestos tiles are still present underneath the carpeting. We'd like to get all the asbestos out. Also, there's some pipe insulation that still needs to be done. We'd be looking, again, in the basement or lower level, new flooring, new ceiling tiles, new lighting, painting, bathroom fixtures on the lower level urgently needed. And then some of the things for the entire building that, again, would benefit the senior center as well as the daycare center, adult day center, and the food bank, and the Boys and Girls Club, we'd be looking for roof replacement for the entire building. Right now, that roof is somewhere around 17 years old, so there's still a few more years left into it. But I don't think it's wise to put nearly $4 million into that building without doing the roof at this point in time. I don't want to let that investment slip away. One of the requirements for an adult day center is that the entire building needs to have a fire sprinkler system. That building does not have any, so part of the proposal would be to do a fire sprinkler system throughout the whole building, update the fire alarm. A portion of that fire alarm is, again, very old, dating back to when I was still at school. So there's portions of that system that need to be replaced. And then what we would hope to do is follow up on the heating system modifications that we had started last year, and continuing with that and converting the building from steam to hot water, replacing the oil tank, replacing the hot water system, some electrical upgrades to go with that. So we're trying to incorporate into the renovations for TEAM, renovations to the rest of the building. Certainly, we can't provide heat to them without, if we're going to address our whole heating system, we can't provide heat to them without addressing the whole heating system. Really working to. So we're really working to benefit of the town as well as Team and make best use of the dollars and renovations for the project. We're working to try and bring the project in at somewhere around four million dollars. We had a meeting with legislators recently and certainly support for the concept, for the need. Obviously, there's some concern over funding. Funding, I think it is what it is. We can whittle it down a little bit if we need it to. But at this point, we don't think that we're going to shoot through that kind of amount. Suzanne has done a lot of work, Team has done a lot of work with international consultants. Looking at, it seems the need for a senior daycare center.
Thank you, certainly. I can give you kind of an overview. As we know, the senior population's the fastest growing population. And by the year 2025, twenty-five percent of the valley population will be over sixty-five years of age and older. That's only nine years away. As we know, many of us probably have our own parents that are in that bracket and I'm coaching that myself. And we know that there is a need for a medical model. Medical model, if you're not sure of what that is, you may have heard of a social model, Adult Day Care Center, which is kind of a step up from a senior center. There's individuals that may need more individual attention, may need some stimulation, may need be having some care at home. So it gives respite for the caregiver. It may also provide needed care during the day so someone can continue to work. And a medical model will be able to apply, administer medications, watch their daily functions, and a nurse will be on staff so that we could be able to monitor those very carefully closely. It also provides activities. We hope to, you saw the corner, there was a little diet trips. We would bring the pipes in, a hairdresser in, so they can receive services that will help, again, the family that has to caregiver to provide some services for them while they're at their daycare. Breakfast, snack, and a lunch will be provided. We will hope to work with various foods or a comparable vendor that will provide that and will bring food in that just have to be easy, but at its proper temperature. We're going to make it very affordable. It's going to be serving the five valley towns, and Sonya here will be Seymour sheltered and foster residence. And we will certainly give priority to Seymour residents if we find that the limit of forty per day is reached. We know that that can possibly serve sixty to eighty individuals for that program. But we're looking to accommodate forty individuals per day. Generally, individuals do not attend all five days. Certainly, that will be open, but individuals usually attend one to three days. We'll keep it affordable. We also would be able to re-seek out other funding for the area, they would see a being. And Connecticut Home Care for Elders would be eligible program after the first year. So that's why the going, daily rate would be about seventy-one dollars per day, but also have a sliding scale. I kind of did a summary. Open to any questions that you might have.
So let's start with program questions first for Suzanne, and then we can go to, I guess, building questions. That type of stuff, to Don second. So we'll start with program type questions.
Is there an Adult Day Care Center in the valley?
Excellent question. Thank you for bringing that up. There's currently no Adult Day Care Center in the valley. We have valley residents that are going to Hampton, Stratford, Middlebury. I know Seymour residents are going to Middlebury. And there's nothing in Norbertuck either. So the closest one is Waterbury. Then you go to Hampton, New Haven. I think the Goodwin Center is actually closing, but there's Mary Way, there are some. And Stratford has several Adult Day Centers. And not all of them are medical models, though some are social and some are your community. But we did a focus group and determined by many of the senior service providers from the valley area, and they indicated the need for a medical model. As we know, some people may with early onset dementia would need a medical model. Then, especially if those that are required for medication use during the day, they would have to have a medical model.
And I notice we said that we'd be bringing food in for the elderly, the people who are going to be there. We're going to ensure that everybody that there is properly trained, we can have a food maintained, that's how for...
Correct, yes. We'll have kitchen staff. I'm served safe certified myself. But we certainly advocate and we have the team to make sure that we meet all the compliance issues with public health requirements necessary to be able to provide those services.
I've got a question.
Go.
Do I?
No.
A couple of questions. What's the age range? Is there a minimum, maximum?
Well, typically, we're focusing on sixty-five years and older. But we know for other, we visited several different Adult Day Centers throughout the area. At least six different locations. And typically, they're over sixty. There are some, believing early onset dementia, they're in their forties. So we wouldn't restrict it. We would, if there's a need that someone needs some service, we would be able to provide. They may have to be on the self-pay rather than, they may not be programs that will cover some of the costs.
Right.
There are some like, some insurances that they'll cover, but minimum...
That was my next question.
Only a small amount of people have that type of insurance. But Stratford, there are some areas that actually have individuals who are, have insurance for such things.
And then as far as the adults that come in, their ambulatory needs, will there be any restriction on that? Like as far, you know, some of these people may need aids with them all day. Would that not be the type of person you would have in there?
It depends on the specific individual. I know that visiting others, there's some that are wheelchair, many walkers, motorized wheelchairs. I think we want to limit the number of motorized wheelchairs that are in the facility at one time because of the space that it requires, et cetera. If they needed tremendous amount of personal care, that might not be the case for them. But if they needed showers in the morning because you're rushing to get out to work, then we would provide the showers, facility, facility, CNA, that will help us with the showers.
And how many will you have? How many medical professionals will you have on staff on any given day?
Well, with the ratios that are required, and there's no state licensing requirements, but there is a certification that you get through Connecticut Adult Day Centers certify, certification. And it's a seventy-one, seven to one ratio. Actually, when the shower would be a one to one ratio.
Okay, and there'll be a nurse on staff all the time?
The requirement is that they have to be on staff at least fifty percent of the time when she's not there. There's, we would have a CNA, let's just say they're on staff. And we would make sure that we would pay a stipend to them to be on call a hundred percent of the time. Initially, our goal is to have a hundred percent of the time. And actually, there's a plus after having a RN on staff.
Because it just, it seems to me, I'm just thinking out loud, as far as if you have people coming in and if you have a large amount of people that really need to be in, you know, motorized scooter and they can't really get up and ambulate without help, and you're not going to have enough staff to support those people. So would we have to turn them away?
Yeah, if they had a aide that would be willing to help them, we would lock them that. So I think those are the areas maybe we need to look a little deeper in.
Okay.
But, you know, my proposal to license, you know, my CEO is to have our, and we have a director on staff as well as the part-time staff.
Thank you.
Karen.
I'm embarrassed to admit this, but I went to school there in nineteen sixty-two. I don't remember there being an elevator there.
There is an elevator.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, so we're very, we have an elevator in those levels. At the entrance is all the way down, we hear like...
By the gymnasium.
Next to the gym, the elevator is next to the gym.
Oh, down, oh.
It's not there when you...
Okay.
It's not above, it's not there.
That's a good point, that there is an elevator, so that's already in place. And I've used it recently, so I know that it works.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just besides for the actual construction of it, what is the town's role in this going forward? Is there any, or is it partial, or is Team just going to be handling everything?
It would be one of Team's programs. And I know that there's conversation with the local agents are paying a small stipend amount for rent, but it was not a lot in the budget for that, especially the first year. But we would like to mention funding because it can be reversed or the program costs after you're living in the business for a year. And it will be certain location projects, so we have six individuals involved in the program. So there's a time frame for you to be able to, if you're coming in. But we would work with, because Town of Seymour, you know, the destiny of like some type of stipend for the space.
All right, any other program questions? No, okay. Any questions, thank you Suzanne. Any questions on the building itself, the work that needs to be done? And then we'll get into the finances a little bit and then we'll see what everyone thinks. Building type questions.
Yeah, once again, would you guys be going up for bid for this? Keep rates lower?
The plan would be to apply to the state of Connecticut for essentially four million dollars of state bond money. We met earlier this week with the entire state delegation to get their buy-in. We have unanimous, I think we can say, buy-in from our entire state delegation. So they'll all be working hard to try to bring this money home. One of the issues that was raised by Representative Gentile from Antonia was the amount of the ask, the four million dollars. And she wasn't sure if that would be possible all in one shot. So one of the things that we had talked about was some type of phase in, where we might, we might get one point five million, as an example, over three years to do this work. I think the draw for the Town of Seymour to give up this much space to Team is us being able to get the sprinkler system put in, the HVA system put in, the windows done. That will benefit the entire building. So it would help the Boys and Girls Club grow. It'd help our Recreation Department grow, our Senior Center grow. It benefits the food bank. If we did the phase in, we might not see that all right away. So the reason I wanted to bring this back to all of you tonight and to have Don and Suzanne speak was to make sure that I still have the board's buy-in that this is a direction that we all want to go. Our hope, everyone that was in the room, was that we would get the full four million. It would take us about eighteen months or so to get all this work done. And then at the end of that process, the community center would essentially be completely redone. And we would have all of these activities, all these events going on. But if that does not happen and we have to phase it in, that's where Don's going to have to get creative to see how we can do different things. And Seymour might not get the initial benefit in years one and two. So I want to make this very clear. I intend to speak to the other valley mayors to talk to them about some potential input on their part. But I think in reality, we're probably going to be hard pressed to get any money from any of the other communities. You know, we can certainly look at small cities grants between the five towns to see if that can help offset some of the costs. But again, I don't know where that's going to fall. So I want to put everything out on the table, make sure everyone has a full understanding of what we're doing. At that point then, we need to get some guidance from Rich as to what we need to do to make all this happen, to make it legal, to bring them on as essentially a tenant of the building. But I'm sure we're going to have to have some type of long-term arrangement in place to make sure that this money is, the state is comfortable with giving us this kind of money. So, so let's open it up to questions, concerns, or comments with any of that.
I feel that we want to continue on that same path. We want to keep improving the community center so that it can give back to the community, no matter which way it's used. My only concern is, is when we're doing the asbestos abatement or how we're going to do containment, is that whatever firm we're hiring, whoever's doing it, is that we're keeping people out of that area. As you and we all know, that when we see stuff, people have a tendency to just go and look, see, and see what's going on. So we want to make sure that that's being done properly.
I would expect that would be addressed by professionals. And that's something that we had talked about. If this were to go forward full steam ahead, Boys and Girls Club would not be able to have a summer program in 2017.
And then, so then we would have a contingency plan in place for that, correct?
We haven't looked at that yet, but there would need to be something in place. Either alternative space for them or they would not have a summer program.
Yeah.
All right, I mean, because that was the concern with the whole asbestos, not having the kids around there at all.
Again, based on schedule, ideally, next summer would be abatement. And then we can, no kids in the building, but by September, then even going back in, we'd be working, they'd be coming in more or less three o'clock, which is at the end of the workday. So we should not be working any conflict between the work and the club. We still have Recreation Department upstairs and Senior Center upstairs, and we're still going to have to work around it. Renovations to that floor should be somewhere again included. It's an occupied building, so we're going to have to hopscotch through it. And it's going to be an inconvenience to those occupants.
With regard to the roof, do you have a firm estimate as to how much that's going to cost? Because I've heard for years, and I'm sure other people have heard for years, that that roof is a mess.
It was redone, I think in the late eighties is the last time it was redone. Right now, it's still in good shape. There's not any leaks that I'm aware of coming through it, so it's still in good shape. We did have it looked at by a looking professional. We do have an estimate on the replacing of that roof right now, and it's in the neighborhood of a quarter million dollars.
Quarter of a million?
For the entire building.
So that's where we are.
And that's, again, that's part of the reason why we don't want to do a lot of improvements or put off, have the state put off any money on the top floor.
Right, right.
Where the seventeen or eighteen-year-old roof on top of the roof.
I understand.
But yeah, from the Town of Seymour's perspective, there'll be no town funds put into this project or really much of any, other than some engineering costs with Don to do some of this preliminary work. The advantages to the Town of Seymour, obviously the Adult Care Center would certainly be a great thing, not only for Seymour, but the entire valley, but the tremendous amount of upgrades we would get for our community center. Because though we have the one point five million going out, hopefully the referendum in November, none of that money is earmarked towards the community center. So this would give us an opportunity to jumpstart the work at the community center, get that going that much quicker.
We may have a chance to get the money through the state because it's a multi-community.
Correct.
Adult, because as we know...
Intergenerational is the term.
As we know, the state has no money.
Right. Yeah, that is, that is one of the issues.
Negative money.
Yes. But this is something that potentially could be of interest because of the impact that it's going to have on multiple communities, multiple, multiple generations. But I mean, the legislators were very upfront, saying that this is a big ask. So I don't want to think that this is a, you know, an easy, an easy get, because that's not the case. So I wanted to prepare this board that it could be a three-year phase in. And again, the impact, or the gain to Seymour is not going to be immediate. So I want to make sure everyone's on board and everyone's comfortable with that before we really dig into this and get everything going. If, if everyone's comfortable, then at that point, Don's really going to dig into this and I'm going to turn Rich loose on getting everything going with Team. So does anyone have any objections, any issues, any concerns?
I have one more question. We discussed the shared spaces, right? I remembered a long time ago, we had talked about the, oh Kurt, help me because you're on the board at the same time. The fire chiefs having a school up there or giving classes up there or something. Would they be able to use those rooms for that?
As long as they didn't need to have them being the only ones use the room.
Correct, it could have been anybody, right?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
So this would increase, yep, this would increase meeting space. That would be done through Community Services Department.
Okay. I was going to add a question. Is it hot in here? It was hot, it was seventy-five. Thank you.
I think it's nice.
Got a woman with a hot flash, it's going on.
So any other, because once we talk about this, this leads us to the next item on our agenda, which is if we're going to take this step forward, then we absolutely need to take that step forward as well.
Okay.
So is everyone comfortable?
Yes, very comfortable.
Okay, excellent. Rich, I don't need any type of formal motion at this point. We would take formal motions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent, thanks Suzanne. Okay, so seeing as though everyone is comfortable with item number eight, we're going to move on to item number nine, Discussion Take Possible Act, whoops, I'm sorry. I skipped one. Since we're comfortable with seven, we're going to move on to eight. Discussion Take Possible Action Regarding Community Center and Seymour Congregational Church Parking Lot. So in your packets, you have a schematic drawing. And we have long spoken about putting a additional parking at the community center. And one of the things that we were all aware of is that as we increased the programming there, that we are going to start to run out of parking, which we're getting to that point. So I've had some conversations over the years with the folks at the congregational church, now with Pastor Glass there. She seems to be very supportive of this idea. So Don and I met with Bruce Baker, who was the, I'm not sure of his title, but he's the... president of the elders or something along those lines. And the church is very receptive to the town of Seymour putting a parking lot on church land directly behind the church that would be used by both the church and by the town. It would be some type of, we would lease it from them for a dollar or something along those lines. The town would put in the work to have the parking lot built and it would be shared going forward. So I asked Don to put a sketch together that would give us an idea as to what parking at the community center in the back would look like. So with that, Don, I'll turn it over to you.
Sketch that just passed out, obviously, is the parking lot behind the community center and then also the open field behind the church. Because the property that we're constructing the parking lot on is owned by the church, we do have to appear before wetlands and planning and zoning for the necessary land use approvals. This is not a town of Seymour project and we're not exempt from zoning in this project. The, generally, I think everybody is familiar with the parking lot as it stands at the community center right now at that end where the farmer's market is and the in driveway is right, as soon as you turn onto Pine Street and it goes in and the out driveway is over, a little bit further down closer to the building. Because of the pie-shaped area, it's a very difficult area. So what we kind of looked at was how best to configure a parking lot that would connect from Derby Avenue. There are certain regulations on where the entrance can be off of Derby Avenue in relation to the traffic signal. But how that traffic, you know, pattern could work, if you came in off of Derby Avenue and then getting out over the Pine Street. And basically, we can kind of do a straight bypass through and the majority of the parking spaces for the church are kind of tucked off to the side and kept closer to the church. And we end up with a few more parking spaces behind the building and up the end of the building that are, you know, specifically for town use. But the, I guess the agreement and the proposal is that all of the spaces between the two lots would be shared. Obviously, on Sunday morning, they have a need for, these parking spaces out close to the Pine Street, they'll be moved. It's a shared agreement. The existing in driveway to that parking lot would stay as it is or stay in the location as, as it is. And that in driveway would only service three handicap spaces and a drop-off site for the church. So that would kind of be signed to try and identify that. Keep the general public out of that first driveway, push them down a little bit further down Pine Street where it's opposite the gravel lot, where that they would then come into that lot and that would bring them along the back of the school. And then if they turn to the right, they'll actually exit out on Derby Avenue. We have a parking space shown for the bus. Currently, right now, the bus takes up about five of the line spaces that's out there. We also have shown a little bit of a triangular area for the farmer's market. I think that they can be confined over in that corner. It'd be a little bit easier on Tuesdays when they're down there and they're just kind of all over the place trying to park. Get someplace that they're identified to that doesn't impact the parking spaces and then I think that would all work better on Tuesdays for farmer's markets as well. We're wrapping up the plan now, working and talking to Tony Primo on what the town can do. And then we'll be going out and getting some prices and seeing how much this is going to cost.
All right, so any questions on the plan itself?
I think it's a very well-thought-out plan, that's for sure.
Town has about $65,000 budgeted for this. That was part of the projection, so.
Can we use the estimate on the cost?
We haven't gotten it yet.
Oh, okay.
So we're hoping it's $65,000.
Or under.
Really?
When you think about it, we re-
It seems like it should be much more.
We redid Gary Park for $85,000, so it's probably reasonably similar.
Gary Park's a little bit bigger.
Yeah, so, you know, I think $65,000 to $70,000 is probably a realistic number, give or take, depending on drainage work and, you know, when they rip the ground open, what they find, so.
You don't think?
No, go ahead, sir.
This is kind of unrelated, but you don't think there will be any issues going forward between the town and the church, kind of fighting about any of these spots?
Well, that's one of the things, we'll have an agreement in place that will identify that. Now, no, because I think everybody will be understanding, but to your point, 10, 15 years down the road.
Yeah.
We want to make sure that the agreement is, is pretty understandable for everybody. That way there is no-
I'm confident that it will be, but I could already envision the, the battles that will take place.
I mean, let's say we, you know, it's, it's Sunday morning and there's church services going on and we decided to have a bus trip and now there's 40 cars parked in the lot and the church doesn't have any place to go. I mean, rightfully so, they'd be upset. So I think it's going to matter of being, everybody being aware of what's going on and, and have a good understanding. I mean, that's, that happens now too, so.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah. But again, the church is extremely receptive, as you can see, Don named parking area BB as a joke after Bruce Baker. So we told him we were going to dedicate that, that section to him. The one thing we're also looking at is some lighting. If, if you've been in that area recently, you know that there's an old junky chain-link fence, which we will, we will rip down. We're going to take down some of the shrubbery that's there. We're going to leave the one big pine tree that's there, which potentially could be the town's Christmas tree going forward, because it's, it's right there and it's easy. But, you know, we'll put in that decorative wooden guardrail to kind of clean it up, make it nice. So I think it's going to clean up the whole area and benefit, again, the Boys and Girls Club, recreation, food bank, the church, hopefully the adult care center. I think everybody's going to benefit from this parking lot.
So it's sort of be like our little green, town green area?
No, it's, it's a very small strip, tiny.
No, I know, I know it's a very small strip, but sort of like a little community area. You know what I mean?
Very small community area.
You're missing the whole point here, Miller.
Sorry. Yes, yes, Emery, it'll be very much like that.
The young and the old are coming together.
Oh, yes, 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 okay. I'm with you there. Yeah, agreed.
Yeah, okay. In vision, look outside the box.
I was the confused one, so I apologize.
Everybody's coming together.
Yes, yes. Well, and that's what we talked about, all of us, for the community center, to have that kind of be a focal point and all different groups, all different activities going on there, so. So any questions, concerns, comments? Again, this is one I want to make sure that we have full buy-in from everyone. I know we tentatively all agreed, but again, just want to make sure everybody's still on board with the direction.
Yes.
Okay, because then I'll have Rich continue, or I'll have Rich, excuse me, start putting an agreement together with the church and then I'll have Don continue getting the quotes and things. And I'll report back in our meeting, three weeks from now, we'll have prices and, and things. And we'll take a formal vote at that point when the money comes in, because we'll have to go out, or excuse me, when the numbers come in, because we'll have to go out the bond, or excuse me, out the bid and things like that.
And if we do it on a lease basis, we may need an 824 review from the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Yes. Well, Don has built in his schedule, planning and zoning and inland wetlands, as he had mentioned. If all goes according to plan, we would break ground at some point early to mid-October. Me? Okay, any other questions? I thought you were saying something. No? Good, Don, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work tonight, Don. All right, so item number nine. Discussion, take possible action regarding veterans' tax exemption. The state of Connecticut recently made some changes to its statutes with regards to veterans' tax exemption. And when we had put the ordinance in, I believe it was two years ago or three years ago when we updated it, myself, Karen and Nicole had hoped that the town could do more, but unfortunately the town was limited by what it can do based on state statute. So with this change that came down, I asked Priscilla to look into it again, to see what we can and can't do and to try to make some recommendations and a little presentation to this board. So that Priscilla's going to do that tonight, give us some information, give us something to think about, and hopefully in the coming meetings, we'll be taking action and moving this forward. So Priscilla, we'll turn it over to you.
Okay, well, additional veterans, it's local option additional veterans, was instituted back in 1989 by the Board of Selectmen with a $1,000 exemption. It only included basic veterans, never included the disabled. And I think it was in, hold on a little note here, don't mind me. In 2000, in 1994, they increased it to 2,000. And then in 2003, the state said you could increase it up to $10,000. So over a five-year period, the town moved it up to the $10,000. And again, never included the disabled. So what we have now is what's going to try to get the disabled in this. Thank you.
Thank you. Got it.
Like I said, if right now, it, the current exemption is $10,000 and only the basic does not include the disabled. We're proposing $15,000 for basic and disabled. We currently have 119 eligible for the additional veterans. It's 107 on the real estate and 12 on the motor vehicle. I'm estimating 200 for the new one, because we're going to be increasing the income limits.
200 more or up to 200?
Up to 200. Okay, the current income limits go in line with what the state program has for the homeowners, which is now 35.2 for single and 42.9 for married. We're proposing, we can bring it up to $10,000 over the state homeowners program limit, which would put it in line with the limits for the town homeowners program. And then I figured, based on this, what we're doing now, this year was $39,486.96 in taxes. If we increase it at the current mill rate, we're looking at $108,000 or a tenth of a mil. Which really isn't all that much. The, one thing too, with the additional veterans, is it's not, it's not age-related. As a homeowner's is, at 65 or totally disabled, as far as the veterans go, there's no age limit. You can come out of the service, be 25 and as long as you meet the income requirements are eligible. The second page shows what we're currently giving on the left-hand side and what we're proposing the exemption would be on the right-hand side, based on the $15,000. As you can see now, with the base exemption, people with the base exemption are getting more than the people that are disabled, up until you hit the 76% to 99% disabled. So we're proposing to increase this all the way, so when you start hitting a percentage of disability, you're getting more than just the person who gets the basic. So it would top out to the people that are 100% disabled, would be getting 1404 off their tax bill. And after that, I included for you a copy of the Public Act. The Public Act does say that you can go up to $20,000, but we're recommending the 15 as the starting point. You can come back at another time and revisit this and increase it if you want to. It also says that you can go up higher on the income, but we're recommending it goes with the town homeowners program to keep everything in line. But again, you can always come back and revisit this at a later time and increase it. This is just the starting point.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Can you let us know on the additional veterans exemption proposal, can you let us know what the acronyms mean? AAA, BAD, DAC?
Yeah, they're codes for the computer.
Okay.
That's what they are. Then how it works too, is when you look at it, when you're on the additional, your AAA is your basic. Then your BAD is based on your income and it's double your basic.
Okay.
And then the DAC is the town program and that's $10,000. And on each one of these with the additional, the B is always twice the A. But they're just basically codes that go on the computer.
Makes one more sense now.
Completely clear to us.
Glad you understand, I've been trying to learn it for 10, five years now.
No, I just, I feel-
Yeah, absolutely.
I think this is something important that we need, it's the least we could do for our veterans. So I think if we go with the recommendation of the $15,000, like you said, we can revisit it in six months or next year and then increase it. I think we need to do whatever we can for our veterans that, you know, served our country and given their lives.
Our office felt this was a good starting point to go with the 15. And then see where the town wants to go after this.
Do you have any kind of quick estimate of what, if we went to the full $20,000, it would, it would, the impact would be?
How much more?
Yeah.
You'd just have to take that 20, 200 people times and make it down to 20 and then it'll be a little late and then we're going to be here.
Okay.
But I didn't calculate without, sorry, I know.
No, there's no problem, it's like another 33%, right?
So this one, we, is it 15,000?
Probably like 100, 140, right? Yeah, 140.
I mean, in the scheme of things, it really is not a lot of money, but it does help out the veterans by taking some money off of their taxes. And then the people who are also eligible for the state and the town homeowners program get even more from those programs, so it does help quite a bit. I know my father, who is not a disabled vet, but between his veterans, the additional veterans, the homeowners and the town homeowners, he's getting like $1,000 off his tax bill. When you're on a fixed income, that's a big deal.
It is.
So my, my thought is, why not look at just going to the $20,000?
Oh, we can't, this, Priscilla just gave us a-
I think it's just proposed.
This is just, yeah, informational.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't think anybody's against, or doing that, I would think, based on last time we talked, I think we all wanted to do the maximum.
All right, absolutely.
I mean, we could, as Priscilla had said, we can even step it up. In year one, it's $15,000, in year two, it's $17,500, in year three, it's $20,000, and we progress it right up, so there's not that one big shock to the tax rate.
And you said $20,000 is the limit? Is that the max? Or, no?
I defer that to Priscilla. Because it gets a little confusing.
No, it's up to 20.
20?
Or 10% of the assessed value.
Now. Priscilla, what would have a bigger impact? And this, to Stefan's point, the, increasing the exemption or increasing the income limits?
I would kind of think the exemption, because as it is now, with what we have with the income limits, we'd be adding like at least another 40 to 50 people.
Okay, okay. Because, I mean, the biggest issue I've heard from the vets is they don't qualify because they make too much money.
Right, and before, it used to be that lower amount, but now we're looking to bring it up by 10,000 more.
So a single person making $45,000 or less would qualify. And a family or married making, under $53,000 would qualify. Well, I think what you see, Karen, is a lot of guys that are retired, maybe on a pension, that are making more than that and they're not qualifying because they're making too much in their pension. But to Priscilla's point, every little bit helps at this point. And when we talked about it the last time, we'd wanted to increase it, but we were limited by what we can do. So this is giving us the ability to increase that. So Rich, this is an ordinance, so we'd have to go to the ordinance committee and go back through that way.
Because when it was done in 89, it was done just by a resolution. They had that.
Yeah, we did one, what's it, two years ago, maybe?
Was it last year? I thought it was last year.
I thought so. If we can, yeah, that was the one that kept saying how pretty Nicole was, remember how funny that was?
Funny, that was funny.
Yeah, I found it funny. No, I don't, yeah. Sugar. I'll have a cannoli instead. Okay. So any questions for Priscilla? Does everybody kind of understand what we're doing, what we're talking about?
Yep.
Yes.
Is it safe to say that we are all on board with doing as much as we can?
Yes.
At this point?
Yes.
Okay. And so based on what Priscilla's saying, we're all comfortable with that? And if we could, to Stefan's point, maybe step it up over a two or three-year period, we're all okay with that as well?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so what I'll do is I will work a little bit more closely with Priscilla and we'll get something ironed out. And then Rich, in the meantime, will look. If it's something we can address just with a straight resolution, then we'll bring it back to the board at some point in September and we'll get that going. If it's something that needs to go back to the ordinance committee, then we'll push it to the ordinance committee and we'll have this in place. Priscilla, correct me if I'm wrong, even if we did something now, this wouldn't impact until the October of 2016 grand list, which would be July of 2017. seventeen. So we still have some, we have plenty of time to do this and get this done right, so. Any other questions, concerns for Priscilla?
No. Thank you.
Thank you for, for putting this together, Priscilla, and for staying out late tonight. We appreciate it. It's well past your bedtime.
Me too.
I missed the end of the road basketball game.
We appreciate it.
Priscilla, hey, you can come in at nine, ten, or eight-ten tomorrow. Yeah, that's right. Yeah. Okay, item number eleven. To consider an act upon a resolution recommending an appropriation and the authorization of borrowing for costs with respect to the two thousand seventeen Town Roadway and Drainage Reconstruction Replacement and Improvements Program, setting the date for a special town meeting and a referendum to consider and act upon a resolution with respect to such recommendations and to take actions and make determinations related thereto. All right, in your packets, you all have the specific resolution from Bond Council. And again, the first one that we're acting on is the four-point-five million dollars for the road program that we had talked about, the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, and two thousand nineteen program. So in lieu of having to read the entire resolution, Bond Council has given me a shortened version. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution as presented and to waive the reading of the resolution into the record. Anyone who would like to review them, they will be provided a copy by Rory right now and they will be listed in their entirety in the minutes. Motion by Al, second by Nicole. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The chair votes aye, motion passes six-zero. Next item on the agenda is item number twelve. To consider an act upon a resolution recommending an appropriation and the authorization of borrowing for costs with respect to the two thousand seventeen Town and School Facilities Repairs and Renovations Program, setting the date for the special town meeting and a referendum to consider and act upon a resolution with respect to such recommendations and to take action and make determinations related thereto. So again, this part is for the one-point-five million. That will be for the building repair. Now, and just as a note, the Board of Finance will be acting on these same two resolutions next Tuesday. Assuming it is passed by the Board of Select, or, excuse me, the Board of Finance, it will go to a town meeting, which will be held late in October. And at that point, that town meeting will be adjourned to referendum for the ballots in November. Okay, so with that, I will read the resolution, the shortened one that was presented by Bond Council. Motion to approve the resolution as presented and to waive the reading of the resolution into the record. Anyone who wants to review the resolution will be provided a copy by Rory Burke and they will be listed in their entirety in the minutes. Motion by Al, second by Nicole. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The chair votes aye, motion passes six-zero. Thank you very much, everyone. Okay, item number thirteen, discussion, take possible action regarding approval of ordinances. So we have three ordinances that went to public hearing, or, yes, public hearing, uh, two weeks ago. We have the justices of the peace, the strategic planning, and the road excavation. So we're going to work backward. We're going to start with the road excavation ordinance. So we received no real public comment of any kind at the town hearing. I did, again, receive comments, and those comments were put into this document from both Brian Asteriak and Don Smith. Are there any further issues, questions, concerns with regards to this proposed ordinance? Is everyone comfortable with the way it was written? Okay, Rich, so we've had the public hearing. The board is comfortable with the language as it currently states. What are our next steps?
Vote to adopt.
Okay.
Vote to adopt it and then it'll go through the publication process and be filed in the town clerk's office.
And that would, it would go into effect twenty-one days from today?
Yes.
Or we can just pick a set date of October first, as an example. Okay. Okay, so at that point, then, I will entertain a motion that the proposed street excavating ordinance will be approved by the Board of Selectmen and will go into effect twenty-one days after publication. Motion by Al. Who has that?
I'll take it.
Second by Stefan. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes six-zero. Okay, I think I just naturally ignore you now. All right, next one would be the strategic planning ordinance. And again, we had no comment on that at the public hearing. These are recommendations, as stated, from our strategic planning committee. Are there any questions, concerns, comments from the board?
No.
And again, we'll be changing the meeting times from quarterly to semi-annually. And the verbiage that says first selectman, finance director and director of operations to meeting with the first selectman and the staff he or she deems necessary.
Plus two.
Bless you. So again, Rich, the same, same course of action?
Yes.
Okay. At this point, then, I'll entertain a motion to accept the changes to the strategic planning ordinance and those, and have those changes go into effect twenty-one days after publication.
So moved.
Motion by Karen, second by Al. Is there any discussion?
Is that me?
Nicole.
Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes six-zero.
Have a cannoli.
Karen, did you think you blacked out for a second? And voted for? Was that me? That was fantastic. All right.
Twins.
Last one, justice of the peace. All right. So in your, or what Rory passed out, for justice of the peace, again, we had limited comments from the public during the public hearing, but we did have lively discussion at the board level. So the ordinance, as it stands, currently reads, "The number of justices of the peace for the town shall be limited to three hundred in accordance with the provisions of section nine dash one-eighty-three A of the general statutes." So are there any questions, comments, concerns, or changes?
That's a lot of justices.
They all have to be from Sparta, yes.
Okay.
Now, we went from twenty to now three hundred. So we've, the ordinance committee.
A couple of years will be where I want to be.
Yeah. We're going to, we're going to step it up, Stefan. Year at a time. So, and again, the big thing for the ordinance committee was that it was a number divisible by three, that way each group can be fairly representative, which we have that. So, again, questions, comments, concerns?
No.
I just want to go on the record of saying, I think three hundred is ridiculous.
Higher, low?
Yeah. I think it's high. I really do. I mean, if somebody really wants to be a JP, there's a test you can take. And, I mean, there really aren't any qualifications. I mean, I, my husband's a JP, but.
So you're saying he's unqualified?
Yeah.
Oh, no. He is qualified.
He's done many weddings lately. But, you know, people, in my experience, people who want a JP know who they want. And they call them up and say, "I'm getting married June twenty-fifth," that Mystic, you know, in Mystic, Connecticut, "and at six o'clock, can you please come up and do the wedding?" So then having three or three thousand doesn't matter if they know who they want.
But, but.
And I think that was Stefan's point, that anybody should be able to be one who wants to be one. And then.
I, I think they can.
Well, right now, they can't be.
They could be if they pay the fee and take the test and.
Right.
The thing. But with becoming just a justice of the peace to the town, it doesn't really cost you. It doesn't cost you anything. You're just nominated by your committee. So.
By the town committee?
Yeah.
Or, I know Leanna left, but for the unaffiliates, they go, and there's a lottery system at the town clerk's office.
Okay. All right, well, then, I'll withdraw my objection. I, I just think three hundred is an extraordinary number.
Now I get the three hundred count.
You didn't get that?
It just clicked in my head now.
What?
Said, are we all Spartans?
Oh, geez.
It just clicked in my head.
Some of us are.
Wow.
Keep us awake.
Sorry. Wow. So, okay, any other thoughts or comments?
No.
No? Rich? Again, same process?
Okay.
Okay. So at this, I will entertain a motion that the justice of the peace ordinance will go into effect twenty-one days after publication as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Stefan, second by Nicole. Is there any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes six-zero. Thank you very much, everybody. Item number fourteen, update on LED streetlight conversion project, Rory.
Rory's getting the mic. Good evening. Today, Director of Operations, Tony Caserta, and I met with the two respondents. We did receive the answers to the questions that we had put out to both of the respondents. They did answer our questions, but it was good to have a chance to follow up in person. We don't have all the information that we want. They said that they can get it to us. We want an additional quote from one of the vendors on a different brand, just to give us an idea of, uh, kind of price range that we're looking at. We hope to have a recommendation for you at the September sixth meeting for awarding the bid. It may be for a specific vendor, but it will more likely be just to present the information as we've received it to you because, as we stated at the beginning of this process, price will be a factor. But depending on what we want and how the services are delivered, it may not be a lowest bidder type situation. So that's pretty much it for tonight, but we will have more details for you on the sixth. If you have any questions, let me know.
Any questions for Rory? Again, if not, the expectation will be that on the sixth, either Rory and Tony will make a specific recommendation to us, or they will present a batch of information to us and then allow us to make the final decision. I had some initial conversations with them today. I think both companies have their strengths and weaknesses, so it's going to be a matter of which direction the board wants to go. The goal for the town at this point is to pay for the entire project in cash upfront. And the way things look now is that we will have the cash on hand to be able to do that. So, hey, any questions?
No.
Okay. Item number fifteen, executive session. We don't need to go into executive session, so item number fifteen and item number sixteen, we do not need to take part in this position because of the level that it's at was hired directly by our building inspector. So an offer has been extended to one of the candidates. That candidate is currently having background checks done. And assuming those background checks come back positive, then that position will be offered to that employee. For that person, I should say. Okay, item number seventeen, appointments. We have one appointment this evening, Rob Rashudi, Zoning Board of Appeals. It's a reappointment, it's a four-year term, it expires eight-seventeen-two-thousand-twenty.
So moved.
Motion by Nicole, second by Al. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes six-zero. Next item on the agenda is item number eighteen, tax refunds and abatements. Nicole?
The following overpayments of tax payments in total of five thousand seven hundred twenty-seven dollars and twenty-seven cents need to be approved for refund in accordance with provisions of section twelve dash one-two-nine of the Connecticut general statutes dated at Seymour the twelfth day of August two thousand and sixteen, Dana Flock Tax Office.
Thank you, Nicole. Okay, at this point, I'll entertain a motion to accept the tax collector's report as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Nicole, second by Anne Marie. Just under discussion, everybody look, make sure there's no conflicts. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The chair votes aye, motion passes six-zero. Item nineteen is transfers. We have no transfers before us this evening. Item number twenty, correspondence. We have a few pieces of correspondence. We have the check register. We have the public works accomplishments of productivity for July two thousand sixteen We have the eight-twenty-four referral letter from the Planning and Zoning Commission with regards to roads and public buildings, and I'll read that into the record, just so we have it. It says, "Dear Mr. Miller, the Seymour Planning and Zoning Commission hereby submits a favorable report on a section eight-twenty-four referral of the town's engineers' recommendations of priorities for the improvements to certain roads and municipal buildings, as described in a report from the first selectman's office and reviewed by the commission at a regular meeting on August eleventh, two thousand sixteen. The commission elected to submit a favorable report at the same meeting. Very truly yours, Robert Looker, Town Planner." So we have that, which will be a part of the packet. And then we also have, um, comments from Joseph Luciano with regards to, um, concerns that he has with regards to signage at town hall for the main public entrance, wheel stops needed for the fishway parking, publicized policy on public comment provided by citizens with disabilities, and publicize the identity, the function, and the activities of Seymour's ADA coordinator. So his comments, as you can see them, they will be attached to the minutes, so that way his public comments are reflected. Okay, so that closes our correspondence. At this point, we'll open it back up to item number twenty-one, public comment. Is there any additional public comment? Is there any additional public comment? Anything you'd like, Mr. Flynn, just come on up to the microphone.
Michael Flynn, eighty-five Skokiarats Street, Seymour, Connecticut. I think I'm talking specifically about the Skokiarats Street corridor, that region right across from the Chatfield area. And I was walking across, because I, the people who owned the property allowed me to park there, you know? It's a good thing I didn't lose my balance. Somebody was, young kid, probably nineteen, twenty, is going down there at about sixty-five miles per hour. I mean, if you positioned a cop somewhere in that vicinity, you could probably get, in the morning, people going to work, people coming home, you could probably get a minimum of about fifteen or twenty tickets. Something's definitely got to be done about. Somebody's going to get killed walking across the street there. I mean, and I see a lot of these parents, I know some of them are involved with PT and everything else. Some of them are going down there forty-five, forty-five miles an hour, fifty. You know, somebody that, that, when I'm saying the corridor, I mean anywhere from the, uh, beginning of the old Waldron property, past the old Waldron homestead, down towards the intersection, uh, you know, it seems they're going through there at exorbitant rates of speed. Something's got to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Is there any other public comment? Is there any other public comment? Mr. Burke?
Rory Burke, Levin Sagamore Drive. I'm speaking as a member of the strategic planning committee tonight. We are pretty much done with the first draft of the plan anyway, it's never actually done. But the last thing that we have to do is public outreach. Because we know from the special town meeting earlier and every other public hearing that the public doesn't show up when we follow that sort of normal protocol, we decided to take a different approach. And we're going to be reaching out to leaders of community organizations and businesses directly and inviting them to attend an event. And so, A, we would like you all to attend, if you could. We think that will help with public buy-in. We think that will help with public buy-in. And also, when we have a finalized list of invitees, which we are hoping to have shortly, we would like for you, if you have connections with them, to reach out, because we feel a personal invite gets a much better response. We have a date, which is October 17th. It is a Monday. We thought a weekday, much better. There are fall sports going on, so that will potentially affect attendance, of course. But if you are available, we very much appreciate it. And anything you could do in terms of invites as well.
Do you have a time?
I believe it's seven. But I can, when we have all the information, I'll forward it all to you.
That's a Monday?
It's a Monday.
I know, I hate to say that to you.
Yeah, okay. I can't hear anything. Is there any other public comment? Okay, we'll close public comment, we'll move on to selectmen's, all the comments, Stephen.
I'm also open.
Karen?
I'd just like to say that I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Number one, who is responsible for the Rotary below Great Hill Methodist Church? 'Cause it's a mess. It's not being taken care of.
I guess that would be us. I would assume it's kinda-
It was a state roof.
Yeah. The town ultimately is gonna be stuck taking care of it, so. I actually drove by it yesterday and mentioned it to Tom Amy, so he's gonna go out and take care of that.
Okay.
Some of that stuff, though, that you think is weeds, is actually not a weed.
I know.
It's a flower, 'cause I looked at it, too.
I know, I know, they're lilies.
Yeah.
I saw that.
But yeah, no, to your point, yeah, Tom will be taking care of that in the next couple of days.
Okay. My next comment is, I'd like to compliment the Seymour Police Department. They lately have been all over 334, stopping people for speeding, including me.
Really?
Karen, you speed?
I didn't realize how fast I was going.
Giddy up.
But she said to me, "This is a courtesy."
What?
"It's a verbal warning."
Which officer was that?
Her name is-
She's in trouble. Don't tell me her name.
Oh, oh, oh. Okay, no names.
No, no, I'm kidding.
She's a sweet young thing.
Please don't say her name.
No, she's a sweet young thing.
I'm just teasing. I would've thrown the book at you, Karen, that's just me.
I was only going 40 in a 30.
There was a child running across that street, that's why we had-
There aren't kids on that street, they're all people.
Just teasing you. No, that's, that's very appreciated, and I'll be sure that the chief knows. I'll pass those thoughts on to-
Yeah, really, truly.
Absolutely, I will.
They have been various, I wish they would come to North Benham Road, which is where I live.
Then they'd get you again.
You come out of your driveway on two wheels, Karen, right in the morning at school time.
Bang.
I don't work anymore. To substitute.
You can't make this up, this is fantastic.
I thought you weren't gonna pick up-
I'm not, I'm sorry, Karen, thank you for the cannolis.
You're welcome.
And anyone out in the crowd who would like a cannoli or a cupcake, please come forward, Karen was nice enough to bring, to bring extra. Thankless, I'm sorry.
The other thing I wanted to mention is, and I don't know whose job this is, but you know that, the sign that we had painted, "Welcome to the Town of Seymour" by Fountain Lake?
The one we had installed going up the hill?
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
It's all faded.
Oh, well, that goes to the issues we had with the company that we chose. So all the signs that that company did look exactly like that.
Well, the other signs, you know, I-
The new ones, absolutely, look beautiful.
Yes.
And again, that's the difference between what we paid and what we should've paid. And again, we made that bad decision to go with that company that I won't name, 'cause Rich will throw something at me. I think they gave us a substandard product, unfortunately.
But we have a great product with the new ones.
Yeah, and that's the issue, Karen, the new ones that were done by New Age, that were done by New Age are tremendous signs.
They look tremendous.
Oh, they do.
Like the one to go to Gary Park.
Yep.
It's brand new.
And the New Age did.
Yeah, New Age did.
They did a great-
And the town signs like that, that look very good, are New Age. The ones that look junky and faded are from that other company that we won't mention.
Okay, well, maybe there's something we could look into.
We've been talking about systematically taking those down and replacing them. But there's a cost associated with that, that's the unfortunate part.
Don't we have anybody in town who could just throw some gold paint?
Uh, they would-
'Cause it's the gold paint that's faded.
Oddly, it would make it look even worse if we did that.
Oh, okay.
'Cause the way they're carved and, yeah.
Okay.
It's unfortunate.
All right, that's what I've got.
Nicole?
Just a couple of things. I, again, I'd like to reiterate with the veterans' tax exemptions, I feel this is something, as we were all in agreement with, very important that we need to do for our veterans in our town, and every town for that matter, but we need to give whatever we can, give back to these veterans, because they've given so much to us, for our country and our freedom. And then also with the team adult care facility, again, another great opportunity to come to Seymour, if we can get that and use that facility with other towns, get to utilize it, I think that would benefit us and old and young and all that utilize the community center. And that's it.
I'm sorry, I forgot one thing. I wanted to reinforce what Fred said about Town Hall being opened on Friday. I think it's marvelous. I mean, like I said before, before we tinkered around with the hours, if Fred had a closing on a Wednesday, and Thanksgiving is Thursday, and Town Hall's not open until Mon, he can't record.
Mm-hmm.
So, I, thank you very much.
Oh, that was the whole board, that was, that was everyone. Al?
I just wanna make a general comment, and I'm happy with the progress we're making in town to move things forward. We all want things changed and we want things to be better for our community, and we had a lot of items on the agenda tonight that show that. So whether things go through or not, I'm hoping they're supported. We have the funding there for most of these items we've talked about, and that's exciting stuff for our town. Especially the roadway reconstructions, I think that's just huge for us, in our community, since it hasn't been touched in 20 plus years or whatever.
Anne Marie?
Hi. I have nothing.
All right, that's fantastic. Okay, just as a note, because we don't meet again until September 6th, for the World Parliament of Mayors, I'm gonna be leaving in the afternoon on Friday, September 9th, and I'll be returning late on Tuesday, September 13th. So during that time, I'll obviously have no access to phone or email. So for the day-to-day operation stuff, Tony and Doug will take care of that, Nicole will handle any and all emergencies that arise, and then all of the service chiefs are aware of my schedule, so they'll know what's going on. So I just wanted to let everyone know of that, since I'll be out of the country for that. So, okay, Rich? Rory, anything you want to add? Nope? Okay, with that, then I'll-
Make a motion, Karen.
Motion by Anne Marie, second by Karen, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes six-zero, mark the meeting closed at 8:42.
I'll type up the stuff from today. Did I miss anything? Yeah, we'll have-
Just Christine.
But we discussed that, right? 9/21 is the kind of date.
That's just a typo.
Here's a bag to take the goodies home.
She's gonna have the teacher conferences.
Yeah, I wanna have everything set by 9:00.
Cannolis or this box?
Thank you, appreciate it.
And there's donuts, cupcakes. And these are compliments of Karen.
You're welcome.
Today is the 16th. Hello. Okay, good.